Testing. Good evening. We'd like to welcome you to our board meeting. The time is six oh one. Uh, today is Tuesday, March fifth. Uh, board members, all board members are present in the boardroom. Uh, along with our student representative Joshua Pack, our superintendent, Dr. Bryant, our, uh, executive, uh, assistance, we have both, um, America Sullivan and Katie Grant, uh, with us tonight. We also have numerous other staff in the room. With that, uh, Mr. Pat, can you lead us, uh, into with to the pledge and then do the landing announcement, please?
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, one government, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you.
We acknowledge that we gather here today on the traditional lands of the Denina people of the Upper Cook Inlet. For thousands of years, the Denina people have been and continue to be the stewards of this land. ASD is committed to diversity and inclusion, and it is with honor and respect that we recognize all ambitious people who live and learn in our community.
Thank you very much. Again, I'd like to, uh, welcome everyone, um, to our meeting. And to thank you for attending and to thank you for supporting the work of the Anchorage, uh, school book, school board, uh, and our district. Uh, we, we give, uh, great thanks to our parents, our students, teachers, staff, uh, school business partners, and the entire community for the investment of your time, your talents, and your tax dollars. That brings us to item A three, which is the approval of the agenda.
Madam President, I move to approve the agenda as written.
There's second, second. Moved in second to approve the agenda. Is there any objection? Any objection? Seeing none, the agenda is approved as presented. That brings us now to item B, our student representative report.
Thank you, Madam President. Got a couple of things. First of all, we've got our next senior advisory board meeting next week on the nineteenth. It's going to be from eight fifteen ten fifteen AM. We are expecting a resolution or two. Um, one I know is going to be about a transportation policy for smaller alternative schools. Um, and I'll report back on that on whatever happens. We also had our students, students in their schools discuss a survey, which was regarding the Academies of Anchorage Student Voice Tactic Team, and it was asking about barriers and potential groups who were left out or underrepresented in our student governments and what ASD or their schools can do to include them. And so we are looking to, first of all, hear what those schools are experiencing and then apply them possibly either individually or into a part of strategy. And finally, we are going to discuss Senate Bill one forty once again, and hopefully all the students have read it by this time. And knowing the current status of the bill, I think it's important that students still continue to talk about that and other issues that are listed on the bill for numerous. Um, and we are also having the student government conference, the statewide conference. And from April eighteenth twenty one, that's still a while ahead, but we are inclined to send a decent delegation from the Inter School District. Uh, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Pat? Good reporter, as always. Thank you, sir. Right. And now we have a special report today from our CAC committee. That's our Special Education Advisory Committee. Please come forward. Welcome. Please, uh, uh, announce your name. And whenever you're ready to begin.
My name is Rosalyn Brady White. I'm the chairwoman.
And I'm Dale Cop. I am the co-chair.
So we are the Special Education Advisory Committee. And here we foster meaningful relationships that engage students, promote health and well-being, and prepare them for success in life. We invest in continuous growth for all staff through relevant professional development to implement quality standards of practice that engage students, expand opportunities, and increase positive student outcomes. We are committed to the success of all students through partnerships with schools, families, and the community. So here at CAC, we support all board goals and guardrails through our monthly discussions to include the Special Education Leadership Team members, CAC members, and community members. So for this year, so far, in October, we focused on math, reading, and college career life-ready goals. The regional elementary special programs expansion, planning to support student access to schools closer to their neighborhood. We also talked about speech and assistive technology, held training on special education assessment of ELL students, and speech generating devices to support learning. In November and December, we focused on those same goals, on the C X C C L goal. Community agencies partnered with East High to talk about independent living and vocational skills. A R C joined Benny Benson for work-based learning at community job sites. E D R and S E R C C, all the acronyms, provide camps for students, healthcare, and construction. We had students go to Juno at the Healthcare Connection Camp at the CIRK office. Students were able to determine if the, if a career in healthcare may be a good fit. They worked with Bartlett Regional Hospital, and students got to see trauma care, airlift, and fire and rescue department provided services. The students also got to do a lot of hands-on courses and received CPR certification. Healthcare careers are desperate for students, and so in moving them from entry-level positions to long-care, long-term careers were also discussed. Students from across the state participated and wrote personal career plans. In January, we focused on the C C L goal as well. We discussed the Academies of Anchorage and Transition Tactic Team. We learned that academies are pathways, are going to be the pathways for students to access career pathways. And special education team members are working with others to improve the transition outcomes through these programs for students with disabilities. This work is in the early phases and will roll out over multiple school years. We were also told that the tactic teams will provide support strategies for the academies to include all students. Transition supports will come to middle school in form of soft skills, inventories, career exploration, et cetera. And then in February, there was a presentation that was held on the Department of Education's National Transition Study for the Self-Determined Learning Model for Instruction. And some, and that some ASD high schools will be participating in that study. The Department of Education is excited to have Anchorage represent Alaska in this study. Um, the top two priorities that were my favorite this year, we ensh- we ensure that we are reaching more parents of students who receive special education services. And we are also supporting our families and communities by providing information and resources that support the students and their families. How we will, um, it says, "The committee group in partnering with parents and other community partners and stakeholders." We have been working hard to have a guest speaker every month. I set a goal for everyone to bring at least three people to our next meeting so that they can see all the work that we've been doing and the collaboration that we've been having with our parents and our, our special education team. It's been an honor to be the chairwoman this year, just because I've been a member for the last three years, I believe. And so to be able to now put parents on the forefront of what we're doing was one of my top, like, it was just really important to me that our parents are really engaged and that they're being heard. And, um, in one of our meetings, um, Kelsey, our assistant director, she came up with this super cool plan with a parent to provide like a one sheet of information because being in special education is, is like you, you know, you have this teacher and you have this person, but who do you go to and who do you talk to and all these things? And, um, I, I implore you guys to even look at that presentation because Kelsey did a really good job connecting with the parents, hearing the parents, and delivering that to our parents. And so, and I mean, I'm a, I'm the chairwoman, but I'm a parent also. And that was one of the themes that was talked about, how it's always difficult to know who to go to. Sometimes you just want to be like, who in special education knocking down those doors when really there's other ways that you have to go. And so I was really, really proud to not only be an ASD employee to see that come and to see that delivered this year. So, yeah. Do you have anything to add? All right. Um, and so how the school board can support our work is we would like all of you guys to join our meetings or come to our events. Um, you can always contact Vicki Citro, and you know how easy it is to get our emails through there, by her last name and first name. Um, we decided to move our meeting to the end of this month because, um, spring break. And so, um, I would like to invite you guys, maybe somebody could be my one of three. And or even Dell's one of three, um, to come and see what we do in there. So a lot of, um, robust conversation. There's a lot of information. We've connected with community partners. They come all the time and give us information. I believe even one of our moms is a member of the Stone Soup Group. So we're always connecting there to be able to push, push that information out. And then any information that we find out on the outside, we're always able to bring back. But I think one of our, I, I told everybody, at first it was, we'll bring one person, but then when we moved our meeting to the end of the month, I challenged everyone to bring three. And so, yeah, that's, that's pretty much it.
All right. Thank you. Where, where do you guys meet?
We're on Zoom.
On the easiest place, yes ma'am. All right. And this, this month, it's, what, what is the date for this month? Or the next meeting, March, that last week, March, twenty eighth, or is it Thursday? Okay, awesome. Thank you. Member, uh, Wilson?
You had actually asked the questions I had. Can you go ahead and, um, just send a invite, a Zoom invite to all?
Yes, sir. I will make that happen.
Right. Uh, member Jacobs?
Thank you, Madam President. Appreciate the presentation. Thank you both for your work. Um, I will happily, um, throw myself out there to be claimed as someone's one of three. And I'm looking forward to the meeting. And, um, if someone wants to participate in CAC or, or is the committee accepting, uh, applications for members of the committee? And how do they join? What's the next step?
Yes, we are accepting members because we were talking about that before. And, um, we have a simple flyer, so I know, like, sometimes I get on Facebook and I share the flyer for members to, for the community to join. And so when we send that invite, I will make sure that flyer is in there and, um, you guys will be able to see how to join. And that, that is one of the pushes for why we're inviting members to come of our community so they can be involved in the conversation and that they can connect and see all the work that's being done. I think just from one conversation, we learned that our special education department is supportive services, and you know, and that means so much more than just understanding that I'm knocking down those doors to go get some answers, you know, like who else's door can we knock down? And so it was really, um, interesting listening to Director Wade tell us about that and, and how that works. And, and, and even the moms that were there, we're like, oh, we didn't know how that works. So we want to be able to get that information out. And, and in order to get that information out, we need more people to come in. And so, yes, it is a open invitation, and maybe we can get cons to share the flyer.
You can get cons to do just about anything to help.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, guys. Thank you so much. Dale, good to see you. Ross, thank you so much.
That's right. Thank you.
Right. All right. So that, uh, brings us to, uh, item C on our agenda, and, uh, we have a, uh, a double, uh, activity tonight. First, we're going to, uh, receive the Career and Life Technical Report. And then we will move to the monitoring, uh, of our reading goal from February. So, Dr. Bryant?
Thank you, Madam President. So this first, first report will be our technical presentation on the C C L goal. So we can move on to the next slide. Uh, so our, uh, C C L goal is to increase our graduation rates from eighty-one percent in June twenty twenty-three to ninety percent in June twenty twenty-eight. And today's presentation focuses specifically on interim goal three point one, um, which looks at the percentage of students that are on track for graduation. We seek to increase that number to ninety percent by twenty twenty-eight. The definition of on track is defined by credits earned, and the full description is on the slide. Next, please. And on this slide, you'll see the percent of students that are on track for the previous two school years. The dotted lines on the graph represent our yearly targets over the next several years. As you'll notice, the target for this school year is seventy percent. And then on the table at the bottom of the slide, you can see the number of students in addition to the percentage of students. Next slide. And we've also provided this slide, which allows you to compare between June twenty twenty-three and June twenty twenty-two, and you'll be able to see our percentage of on-track students broken down by grade level. And as always, we want the board to be able to view this information broken down by race, ethnicity, and student subpopulations, and that includes gender. And then we just have a couple more slides that review the status of the strategic plan on increasing graduation rate. So if we go to the next slide, uh, this reviews some of the central points to the strategic plan for improving the graduation rates in on-track students. And essentially that entails capacity building in key areas, which include attendance as well as credit acquisition and other key factors. It requires a focus on academic planning, for example, as well as student exposure to experiences that develop a sense of grit and perseverance. And then lastly, this table breaks down that strategic plan into five critical pillars, and those include curriculum, instruction, professional learning, data discussions, and multi-tiered systems of support. Um, what you'll notice is that there's a lot of gray right now, and that's because the board is now set to formally adopt its revised goals and guardrails, and that would include this on-track information. So this is a new goal that we're formally monitoring, and we look forward to building out this plan and making progress. We have some ambitious goals over the next several years, but we'd love to see thousands of more students graduate from ASD over the next five plus years. And that concludes the technical report, and we'll go ahead and pivot into our, uh, goal monitor.
Okay, so we're now ready for our monitoring, uh, conversation. Uh, based on the report that was given to us, uh, I think it was February sixth, but because of budget and, uh, other, um, uh, budget, basically, uh, it, it kind of, uh, we had to push it back just a little bit. So I appreciate the administration's flexibility and the staff's flexibility. Um, our conversation today will be on, uh, our goal number, on our reading proficiency goal.
We're not going to have any discussion all about the life.
That's next. Look, that's the next meeting on the nineteenth. That was just a technical report, sir. Um, so before we begin, I just want to confirm that all four components are present in this report. Uh, the report clearly shows what's being monitored. Uh, the report shows the data for the three previous reporting periods, the current reporting period, and the target reporting period. Uh, you should have, I think we had, we did hand out another copy of this if you, if you didn't bring the one that you had. Uh, the report shows a superintendent's evaluation of performance. And the report, uh, shows supporting documentation that evidences the superintendent's evaluation via tables, uh, the tables that are provided, and it also includes next steps. So with all these components in place, we're ready to have a conversation regarding our reading, uh, progress, progress monitoring, um, or our, our progress monitoring around our reading goal. Um, so just a reminder, we want to start with, uh, our current reality, the current reality of our students by looking at the, uh, who, what, and why questions first. And then we'll move on to the how questions, once we have a real clear picture of where our students are. Uh, we did ask board members to send in questions, but of course, uh, we also know that, um, questions will come up during the, uh, presentation. Um, and we, we invite all board members to participate and answer those questions. So with that in mind, um, who's got, who wants to kick off this time? All right. I see member Lessons jumping at the bit.
Yeah, thank you. I'm, I'm gonna, I appreciate the chance to ask a question, but I'm going to ask for the board's indulgence in handing out, um, a little bit of my thinking. So, and I know that there's one copy up there, and Dr. Bryant has that copy.
Okay.
Um, so maybe there's one for President Bellamy and that for board members. Um, and I can send this, uh, for more of a public record, if that's at all helpful later on. Um, what I think. Okay, so I wanted, before I even asked a question about what's happened this winter, I wanted to share with the board what I'm seeing about who our students are and where they're coming from by looking back to the fall. And this was inspired by a presentation, um, that, uh, Deed gave to the Senate Education Committee on January twenty-second, when they presented a summary of what Alaska students are doing versus what, uh, students are accomplishing nationwide K through three. And, uh, that particular presentation showed, um, Alaska versus national trends, sort of students in the well below, below benchmark categories, uh, you know, at benchmark and above benchmark. And what caught my eye during the Senate Education Committee hearing was, my goodness, Alaska students enter well below in kindergarten at a, at a much higher rate than their nationwide counterparts. But by third grade, um, there's a lot of movement for Alaska students. And that got me thinking, what's happening with ASD students? So I opened up our data dashboard and essentially plugged in ASD data for the same fall snapshot. And what I saw is that we have roughly seventy-five percent of ASD students, uh, entering kindergarten this year, this fall, below or well below, uh, benchmark, uh, in reading. Um, if you look at the rate of what happens, what has happened to this year's third graders, though, um, let's just look at the well below category. Students who are assessed as well below are struggling readers. If fifty-eight percent of, excuse me, fifty-five percent of ASD's kindergartners are well below, only twenty-four percent of ASD's third graders are well below, were well below this fall. Um, that is a difference of thirty-one percent. Now, that's like almost triple the growth that's happening nationally. At the other end of the spectrum, we have massively increased the number of third graders who are above benchmark. Nationally, twenty-one percent of kindergartners this fall entered as above benchmark. And that goes up by about four percentage points to twenty-five percent by third grade. ASD had twelve percent of its entering kindergartners assessed as above benchmark. By third grade, we've got thirty-two percent of our third graders as above benchmark. So that's a twenty percentage point growth K through three in the above-benchmark student category for Anchorage versus four percent nationally. I mean, that's astounding growth. And so this is just a snapshot, right? But when community members say, what are you doing to improve reading proficiency? I mean, the proof is there. Our teachers are doing the work over time. We just have seventy-five percent of our entering kindergartners coming in below or well below benchmark. So that our starting place for the district, when, you know, most of our kindergartners walk through the front doors, um, there's a lot of work to do. But what this data is showing is that our teachers and all of the support staff and our families are working together. We're all pulling in the same direction. And that growth has happened despite increases to PTR, despite this year's third graders being kiddos who started kindergarten on Zoom, despite all of these obstacles. So before we ask any questions, I just wanted to say, um, like, let's frame it from where we've started from and then talk about where we need to go. So I guess with that, what, so what I saw then from fall to winter is that our kindergarten teachers demonstrated a significant amount of growth. Um, we had roughly sixteen percent fewer kindergartners assessed as well below in the winter than we did in the fall. But less growth for our first and sort of second graders. So maybe if you, my question is, what is happening in kindergarten that maybe can be? what is happening in kindergarten that maybe can be built upon more in the, you know, first and second grade?
Thank you, Member Lessons. Thank you, board.
Introduce yourselves, please.
My name is Nicole Somerville, and I'm the Director of Teaching and Learning for the Elementary Division. So I would preface this to say, remember, our kindergarteners come in not having had any school. So that is a big difference right there, is they're going from not having had any school to having a quarter of actual instruction in reading. And so you're gonna see huge growth because some kids have, I mean, it's all new. You know, sitting down, listening, following directions, the whole bit. And so that's where you see why you're gonna see a much larger growth when you go from zero, you know, instruction to one uh quarter of instruction at that time.
Okay, follow up? I guess, I guess the follow-up is done, you know, um, there's a lot of work. I think I understand that a lot of the technical things that have to happen with reading, learning, and first grade is critical, and the number of discrete skill sets that our first graders are asked to master and that our teachers are asked to instruct. I mean, the sheer quantity is profound. Um. What additional supports do they need from the board, from the district to help accelerate the growth things to then happen in those first grade and secondary classes?
Well, before I answer that, Diana Beltran, Senior Director of Teaching and Learning, and then I also want to give a shout out to Nicole Somerville as the Director. She really spearheaded uh the CKLE adoption and everything that was READS Act, so all that knowledge lives in her head, so. Um. What I wanted to add, though, is um to Nicole's point that they're coming in with zero instruction. But even though it looks like the older they get, the less they grow, they're still kind of meeting national uh average, and they, and the composite score changes. So even though it looks like nothing changes, it does change because they're still kind of moving up with the the new scores. Um, but in terms of instruction and what they need, um, Nicole has a great description of how kids learn as they get older and how the instruction changes, so I'd like for her to share that with you.
So, I mean, it's hard to judge the difference between first grade all the way up to third grade in what skills they're learning. In kindergarten, it's letters and sounds, and we know that. By first grade, what, beginning of the year test, students are still sounding out letters. So when they get a word like did, it's did, it, did. Middle of the year, it takes a little longer because now they're going did, did, what does that mean? So now they're adding meaning. It slows their process down, and these are all one-minute timed benchmark tests. These are predictors. This is not overall reading. It's a predictor because we know fluency is very correlated to their understanding of comprehension. By third grade, we're asking for them to do what's called a CBM or CBR, which is connected text. So now they get a whole page of um a par- several paragraphs about a story. And so now we're not only having to decode each letter and sound into words, and then each sentence, we're having to build and look for context clues of things such as um compare and contrast, or setting and order of a story. And so they're very different skills that we're looking for as the kids go uh get older, and the testing changes. The other difference in third grade is we're looking for fluency, but that's also prosity. Can they read? Do they understand what they're reading? That's part of CBM, but then they take the map, which really gets into comprehension. And can they answer questions about what they're reading? There's a high correlation, but it's really hard to say what you're testing a first grader on, and they're making growth when they're just sounding out individual words and sounds compared to what you get when you're a third grader, and you're really dealing with that connected text. And so it's hard to compare and to say that one needs more than another.
Other questions? Uh, yes, Joshua.
Thank you. Um, I think you mentioned that a lot of the kindergarteners are coming in with no instruction. Is there some information showing how perhaps students who come through with a preschool that's just education, very short instruction, have any different scores during their kindergarten years?
We don't, we, we don't really track that data, other than as previous principles, we can tell you that in our kindergarten classes, we could tell that when a student had spent time in a pre-K, uh, they came with more information, more knowledge, but they also came with uh, like Nicole was saying, part of the instruction in kindergarten is teaching them how to come in, sit down for long periods of time, even learning how to put their winter gear on because they start in the winter or in the fall and when it's getting cold. So that's all part of it, but kids that come through preschool, they've already learned those different skills coming in, and so it's noticeable by teachers, but we don't have actual data.
Member Donnelly?
Thank you, Madam President. Um. Did, is, Ellie, I mean, Member Lessons, did you produce this? Okay, have you guys seen this? You got copies of it? I'm, I'm curious to how we're gonna measure the success of our new reading curriculum versus the past and versus those of our schools that are using different curriculum. And I'm saying again, we've got some schools that are using Spalding reading. And do you have any comparisons similar to this chart that would show the distinction between our Spalding schools and our non-Spalding schools?
We haven't disaggregated that data, and Mr. Opitz is out of town right now, so um something we can probably put in board tonight.
I think.
I don't, I'm not sure how mu- how long it would take them to produce that.
Yeah, you'd just be breaking them out and then seeing what the the numbers look like here, you know, with our current general reading curriculum versus the Spalding curriculum being used at certain charter schools.
So we will add that request to our information thing, request list, and um work with the superintendent to figure out how to get the information. Uh, but to clarify, this was Member Lessons uh production. Um, this, these were, she was sharing these thoughts with us, um, looking at growth. Uh, other questions before we start another round? Yes, Member.
Well, it's really a comment, uh, reply back to um our student representative. Um, one of the things I was really happy about over the past year is that the Anchorage Assembly increased its funding of the Imagination Library. Um, the Best Beginnings Program, which sends books out to uh families, children and families for zero to age five. It's the right book at the right time. It improves all sorts of things, the parent-child connection, you get a book in your hand, you know which way to turn the pages. And they also shared data at the time that said that the students who are enrolled in this program um have shown to have increased kindergarten readiness as measured in the Alaska Developmental Profile, um, including some of our highest-risk students, um, higher literacy skills among entering kindergarteners, higher reading and math achievement in grade three, and um the children who have participated in Imagination Libraries before they come into our doors um ended up having higher attendance rates K through three than non-participants. That early investment in just the foundational, you know, access to literacy and and improvement of that parent-child bond creates dividends. So that's not a preschool question, but I think it is like relevant. I know that, you know, the 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 House Finance Committee um is talking about, um, you know, they had amendments proposing do we fund this, do we fund that, and funding a program like Imagination Library to meet some new bring up, that's beyond the scope or scale of what we can do. But if community partners can help improve the readiness of the students who come through our doors, that's a win.
And and that, I I appreciate you bringing that up. Uh, parents have to sign your kids up for those. Uh, maybe perhaps we can you know, let them, let parents know that that that's, you know, that it's available. Uh-huh. But uh I don't know if you guys have any thoughts on best beginnings and other early liter- uh literacy programs that that you share with parents? Great.
I would just say too that if, I don't have any thoughts about best beginnings, but I do know that we're making a conscious effort, especially through Lita and family engagement, and so that would be a a piece. The more we involve families, the, you know, um, I think it will demonstrate.
It's, can one of you talk about how you are involving parents? Uh, and, you know, uh, especially with the new curriculum?
Certainly. So um we have uh established several new initiatives this year uh to help with parent involvement specifically around the areas of reading and reading development. Um, Megan Gall and Lika McCullough through Title One um have started our video series. So we've had, I think, six different videos that we've taped this year and put out through social media. We also have a um text message that goes out to all families. I think we have hundred and fifty to two hundred families that have signed up. It's free for everybody. Every Wednesday or Thursday, you get a text message with a tip of what a parent can do with their child to increase reading at home. Uh, it's simple vocabulary games or anything dealing with alphabetical knowledge, uh, questions to ask your child when you're reading to them, and it's just a quick text tip, and it's through a QR code. Any parent can sign up for it. We also have had something called Coffee and Conversations, where um they've written basically a script for principals to use to have monthly meetings with parents. Uh, whole group meetings, like at a PTA meeting or whenever parents want to come in um to talk about different aspects of reading and language development. And then uh, Collady Brothers has sponsored that activity by providing coffee for um the Title One schools to make and serve to their parents that show up. In addition, our new reading curriculum, uh, every single day actually has parent information sheets that go home. They're already printed, so a teacher doesn't have to print and make copies. It's part of the workbook, and they just need to be torn out, and it has um sections of the passage that would have been read that day, as well as questions that the teach, uh, the parents can ask their students. Tips on how to help their students with spelling, reading, any of the activities that are happening within uh the scope of the classroom, and those are part of the curriculum.
Okay, thank you. Um, member Jacobs?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I'm a question based on this data, and then, Member Lessons, thank you for the um the growth data. This is um insightful. I, I'm thinking through to the next board's um plan for legislative advocacy, and um I have a feeling that there's uh fatigue in the halls of Juno from hearing BSA Strong in a Letter. And so I'm wondering if, you know, concepts like inflation-proofing, and then maybe this data speaks to things like universal pre-K is is being kind of a a rallying cry um that won't fall on deaf or tired ears. Is this data, I mean, this seems to be pretty clearly articulating that if we could not start from behind the curve, our students would be better off more quickly. Um, and while our growth might not be as prolific, um, at least maybe in K one, if I'm understanding the data right, um, that um proficiency and and growth would continue to to achieve new heights in grades three and four. I was looking at um Mississippi and Florida's pre-K participation rates. Uh, because those states are often held up as kind of the precursors uh to what Alaska's, the Alaska READS Act, and um folks in Mississippi pointed to their full-day pre-K programs, and then um in Florida, their pre-K participation, something like thirty-eight times ours in state-sponsored program, which is a little embarrassing, frankly. Um, so my question to you experts is, should the board consider really highlighting the benefits of pre-K and tying that to our goal of proficiency and using this? And, you know, our slide deck today is an example on Exhibit A.
Um, Member Jacobs, I feel like that that would be a fair statement. I think it would be a reasonable extension of the efforts made for the READS Act, which provided that point five eight EM. And if we could get that towards a vision for universal pre-kindergarten, I feel like nobody here would refute that as a bad idea. Highly support that.
Just a quick follow-up. Uh, if I may, Madam President, yeah, so, and I I appreciate, to be clear, that the benefit of having um a pre-K student being worth half as much as a first grader, um. But that, that, as I understand it now, we we don't financially have the math, even those weren't approved, or one of the only approved pre-K programs in the state to have a pencil out for full day um pre-K instruction, which is one of the secret sauces down in Mississippi. Um, and so uh, just again, just information that maybe helps correlate a, an advocacy plan um as we go to Juno next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Comments? Yeah, we're, we're, we'll do our next round.
Okay, so um. I may be getting ahead of myself here, so of course correct as needed. Um. I've seen um news reports data recently saying that um the oral phonemic awareness program that we use, known as Haggerty, which we've used for a few years, and I'm familiar as a mom because I've seen my kiddo um and his teachers use it. Um, and uh anyways, it's been very effective. It's part of our plan. Um, but the new research, like from Genuary, said that it might be more effective if it showed letters along with sounds. This is like a short ten-minute activity, but maybe it's not just good to have oral, but also visual. So I guess, is there a shift in what the Haggerty curriculum is doing? Is ASD shifting? Any, just tell me what's happening right now with the Haggerty approach as one of our tools?
So Haggerty is a phonemic awareness tool. It's ten to fifteen minutes each day in grades K and one. Some second grade also go up and use it. There's uh extensions into older grades um that take even less time for those students that need phonemic awareness. We instituted it in ASD a number of years ago because our data showed that our students were not doing as well in their phonemic awareness. Uh, the research that you're talking about is relatively new, and it's relatively few studies at this time. So we're gonna use the research, you know, the um Haggerty program as it is until more information comes to make a better judgment about it. We've seen um good success. And uh we don't want to change things before we know.
We do have a follow-up, Member Left. Any other questions for the team? Member, uh, Wilson?
So I, I I don't know. Well, it's a question and a comment, but um and I think it's relevant for all of our teams that are presenting attendance rates. I I didn't ask this ahead of time, so I'm not asking for anybody to spout out numbers, but I would like to better track, um, maybe for me personally, and and this could be a board request if that's, if that's the case, what our attendance is looking like at particularly, you know, at at each first primary and then secondary as well. Um, because, as we all know, our students are going to be better if we're, if they're here, present to learn. So I am curious to see um what our attendance rates have been like in comparison to pre-COVID. I know COVID's a whole other kind of classification. Um, and to continue to track those to see if if our attendance rate is improving, um, ideally, the rest of our scores would be improving, and and it moves into the next report, the College Career Life Readiness, because our, our employers, um, when our kids leave, you, you have to be present to be employed, so we we know that as well.
So are you, uh, just to put in clarification, are you wanting um information included in the technical report? Or you just want information on attendance in grades K through three?
I, I would like to see both. I would like to see it incorporated in some way. It, I mean, it doesn't have to be necessarily attached to every report, but I would like to see that data more consistently, so we can or or I can, at least as a board member, gauge to see what our attendance is looking like in our schools, because that directly affects our, our kids and their learning.
Yep, right.
Yeah, we would be happy to prepare a report on attendance. I'll defer to the team on the best format, but I think we've captured the spirit of your questions. You can get that attendance data before you, as we look at the the next monitoring presentation.
Can I say too, although we don't have attendance data right now, I'd love for Mandy Clark, Director of Elementary, to share um all the work that Elementary Ed is doing to increase attendance and. Now all the celebrations.
Hi, I'm Mandy Clark, my director in elementary ed. There are a number of things that we are doing right now to focus on attendance and to try to increase attendance at our schools. We have, we're celebrating through Golden Shovel Awards and we're looking at both title and non title schools and we're looking at. At the rate of students that are coming ninety percent of the time. We're also, we have a silver yardstick that schools can earn as well, and that's for the most improvement. From one month to the next month, and then we have celebrations and we deliver those. We have an actual golden shovel and an actual silver yardstick that we go and we deliver to the schools at a staff meeting or at an assembly to be able to help students see that we are. That their attendance is important. We also have multiple schools who have. Have students that participate every morning in taking the attendance and then writing how many students are present. In their classroom and then doing wish you wells to the kids that aren't there. So that when they go home and they're playing in the neighborhood or they see their other friends and they're like, where were you at school? We really want you there. We all wished you well and trying to help kids increase that connectedness to school.
Wonderful. Thank you. Remember Jacobs?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. So I I heard today about a a system. I'm not going to try and pronounce it, but I think it's. U F L I. Okay, you're perfect, but I didn't try. And I I think I understood it to be kind of what we were discussing earlier. With the direct instruction that has visual and verbal components. Could you explain for those of us who aren't familiar what that is and how we're using it?
Thank you. So UFLI is one of our supplemental intervention curriculums in grades K through three. It is new to us this year. We were able to get copies of the manual from the state, from the Aliaska Reading Institute. And we started trainings. Back in, I believe in December, we now have thirty six schools that are piloting. And it is a direct instruction, half an hour a day, starting with phonemic awareness, phonics, all the pieces through comprehension. It includes spelling, writing. And it's it's very directive. So what we're doing is we give the students an assessment to see what letters and sounds they know and where they are. We divide them up during wind time into different groups. And depending on what skills they know is where they start in the curriculum. And that's what UFLI is. It stands for University of Florida Literacy. I believe. And so they're the publisher, basically, this curriculum.
Hello?
Yeah, another question, more than a follow up, but I was looking at the. The overall goal for our proficiency and it refers to the AK star data. I I've heard both March and May for us getting that data. And we know which one of those is more accurate than the other. And then. What I don't think we've discussed since the cuts scores have been. Set in cement that may or may not have dried. Is what we, do we have any guesses to? Confidence on ASD experiencing an improvement in the scores once they're released? Thank you.
That's a great Chris Opitz question. I do believe he's expecting the scores in March. And at the end of March, I don't, I'm not sure how it's going to compare. Because it's been a while since we've seen these scores, so. Hopefully, we're leaning into how to better support our kids for better outcomes for next. Time, but we still haven't even seen what these results are.
Remember lessons?
Um, okay, so this is, I wouldn't call it the million dollar question. I think it's a three point four million dollar question if I did my math right, but maybe I'm wrong. So this is in relation to SB one forty, which has a component. Should it should it move ahead and be cast into law? Where a student who is flagged as having a reading deficiency would receive five hundred dollars per student. But I didn't for K two three. What I didn't see is when that student would be diagnosed. And. If that is tied to the student formally receiving an I R I. Which then becomes a really interesting question, which is the individual reading improvement. Plan, thank you. And I think that earlier this year, the commissioner said kindergarten students don't need a fall I R I. Because there's a lot of work to do. But but they've just entered that, so we'll wait until winter. And. I guess what's complicated, well, everything's complicated, but when you're, we've just passed a budget for FY twenty five. We don't know the number of kindergartners who are going to walk through our door next fall. Who may qualify to have a reading deficiency, but maybe we have some data that can give us a good guesstimate. Can you talk about what you do or don't know with respect to SB? One forty and how we would receive any funds? And whether my calculation, I took the percentages of students in the fall. Who were below, well below. Professional benchmark. And I mashed that up with enrollment numbers and I got around sixty eight hundred students in ASD K three. Who maybe qualify. So that gave me about three point four million dollars of potential funding. So I guess I'm am I in the ballpark? What do we know about when we would receive that? And then. Do you have thoughts about the wisest allocation of that? Is it to tutoring, instructional coaches? X, you know, what are, where where would that go in? ASD's world of possibilities should SB one forty have become law?
So remember lessons, I'll take that question. We kind of talked about this because you did send this one into us early, so that was appreciative. Right now, it's way too early for us to even come up with anything like that. However. We are setting up a small working group just in case. We do get these funds of some sort. So we are sitting up. Diana and Nicole will be setting up a group with some principals and. Teacher experts and stuff to start looking at. What could be? The best use for that money. And as of right now, though. We don't know how much money. We don't know when it would come. We don't know how they would be working on it or any of that kind of stuff. So. For us to go through and try to do something right now would probably not best use of our time. Until we get that number.
Right. All right, seeing no other. Inquiring. Hands. Thank you, guys. Thank you so much. Appreciate you. So next, at our next meeting on the nineteenth, we will have a conversation on the CCL report that you received tonight. And we will add the questions that came up tonight. On the reading. We will add those to our. Our invite list. So that brings us to.
They're going to do research to identify the distinction between the. Progress made by. Students that have had preschool. Versus the ones who haven't. And they're going to have to be careful in that analysis because not all preschools. And we've got students that are fortunate enough to be in ASD provided preschool and then you've got a lot of parents out there that are just scrambling, trying to find preschool for their kids and. In my personal experience as a parent. Academic delivery and a lot of those other preschools wasn't anything close to the content they were giving. ASD preschools.
And I appreciate that caution. It it crossed my mind, but we also know Mr. Opitz is not here tonight, so when we have that discussion with him. I'm sure he will. Give us the parameters of the request. So thank you. All right, now we're moving on to our first public comment period on the agenda. As you entered the room, there you would have seen you were able to pick up a. Blue and white sheet that gives our, got the guidelines and expectations for the decorum inside our boardroom. But now is our time to hear from our public. We set aside an hour at the beginning. And those individuals who have not testified in that first hour are welcome to testify in the second hour near the end of our agenda. But this is an opportunity for the school, for school board members to listen. And for members of the public to inform us about what's important to you. Please note the following. Your public comments are limited to three minutes. There is a timer that starts when you start to speak in front of the dais. You will receive a courtesy alert when there's thirty seconds remaining. Speaking time may not be shared or given to others. When your name is called, please come to the podium, state your name and direct your comments to the chair. Please understand that this is not a time for dialogue. The purpose of this agenda item is to, is for you to inform the board about your views. If you have handouts that you'd like to share, make sure they are clearly labeled with your name. And what, what is the intent of the documents? And give them to Mrs. Sullivan, sitting here to my, my, my left. So with that guidance, we're ready to call our first witness. Witness, our first. Not witness. I forgot where I was. We're ready to, we got to start with our students. So Sophie Crater Rodriguez. Welcome, Sophie. Come forward, have a seat. And it looks like both mics are on, so. Yeah. And then tell us your name and then you can start to speak. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Sophie Crater. I'm a senior in Anchorage School District. I wanted to talk because throughout my years at school. The biggest issue I face is actually ice conditions, icy road conditions in ASD. While ASD is as prompt as they can possibly be with the removal of snow. The same unfortunately cannot be said for ice. In fact, it's often after snow removal that roads are the iceiest. I can personally attest that these conditions are hazardous and pose threats to those who use the parking lot. Several students drift. At the entrance, as the entrance is so icy and lose control. I personally lost control of my vehicle due to such icy road conditions that it drifted. Onto a curb of the sidewalk. Fortunately, there was no damage done. It's also a struggle. To walk from the parking lot into the school, though it might sound just like a short distance. It's. Very, very icy out there some days. I've seen several people fall, including myself. This also makes it even more difficult for students with mobility issues to walk into the school. As well as making. Coming to school less accessible slash unsafe for students who walk to school in the morning. When I didn't drive, I walked to school my freshman and sophomore year and. Was very icy. We invest in student safety through vaccine clinics, counseling services and nurses, for example. Why should this be any different? If the complete removal of ice is not feasible for the Anchorage School District, I. Implore you to take swifter actions when roads are icy, such as setting down gravel or salt before students arrive to school in the morning. In the past, days have passed before. The parking lot looking like an ice skating rink, basically before any gravel has been put down, any action being taken. So yes, thank you for your consideration and your time.
And thank you very much. Okay, next we have Marissa. I don't have a last name. Marissa? Prescott Mills. Welcome. You have three minutes, but please state your name.
My name is Prescott Mills. I'm a parent of a fourth grade student in the school district. I just wanted to come to you guys and share major concerns held by parents, school staff and homeowners in the Muldoon area. About transportation for Muldoon Elementary students. My goal is to find a solution to bringing buses back to Muldoon Elementary. As you may be aware, Muldoon is a Title One school. Most of the school population lives within a mile of the school, so it's considered a primarily walking school zone. While on paper, this makes sense. The model fails to take into account several mitigating factors that impact the educational needs of these students. Those being safety, truancy and attendance and available resources. The school is located on a short residential two lane road on Cherry Street. Without without bus routes during drop off and pickup time, the entire population of the school is expected to be dropped off within a ten to fifteen minute period. Causing major inconvenience to homeowners, first responders and unsafe and dangerous conditions for students trying to walk to school. The car rider line wraps around the school, past Sixth Avenue, blocking the stop sign and effectively turning it into a one lane of travel in both directions for half an hour twice a day. Causing drivers to have to veer into oncoming traffic just to get through on Cherry Street and Sixth Avenue. Homeowners, driveways and mailboxes are being blocked. There are very few walkable sidewalks, nearly no crossing guards and all of this while kids are darting out into traffic, trying to cross the street to get to school. It's not a matter of if, but when there's a tragic accident causing serious injury or worse. We all live in Anchorage and we all know that Muldoon isn't necessarily the safest neighborhood to walk in in general. And that just goes for students who find their way to school. There's a large portion of the school population that's only making it to school sporadically or not at all. Parents of young students who don't feel comfortable allowing their kids to walk to school. Or may not have transportation or unable to leave or take off work halfway through their workday to pick their kids up. So they may just allow their kids to stay home. There is a domestic violence shelter only a few blocks from Muldoon Elementary School with several kids who barely come to school at all because it's not safe for them to walk to school. Due to the other half of the domestic violence situation, knowing their location every day. Fixing these issues doesn't have to be a huge financial lift for the school district. There are several buses already allocated to Muldoon Elementary for special needs students and these buses may hold a handful of kids at best. I pass several nearly empty school buses on my way to school every morning that cross Muldoon Elementary and go to Creekside Elementary less than a mile away. We reallocate the resources that we have available currently, possibly allowing these buses to drop kids off at both schools. It may not require the school district to hire any additional drivers. It would alleviate the dangerous traffic situations on Cherry Street. Let's get creative.
Thank you very much, sir. Next, we have Delani. Or Delaney Cordozza. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Delany Cordozza. I've worked for ASD as a paraprofessional in an SLC classroom for over eight years. In that time, I've been slapped, punched, kicked, scratched, headbutted, bit, had furniture thrown at me and my shoulder separated. All of this for less pay than the average retail worker. After eight years. During weather closure days, we receive emails saying, teachers, stay home, stay safe. Support staff, you must return to your building or use your own leave to pay yourself. We're being punished for the weather. By having to pay our own wages. In other words, the teachers' lives mattered, ours don't, leaving us feeling as though the district sees us as expendable. Easily replaced. Right now, our elementary SLC classes do not meet the basic legal requirements due to lack of staff. Offering a higher on bonus is nice, but there's no incentive for us long term employees to stay. Half of my staff is leaving this year. They've already found other jobs. Offering us a twenty five cent raise is an insult since it still won't give us a living wage. I have a life threatening medical condition requiring me to wear a medical bracelet. During a training, one of the ASD trainers asked me if it was worth the possibility of scratching a child to wear my bracelet. My life is not worth scratching a child to the district. This is not okay. We're not expendable. We are people. ASD and the community as a whole needs to remember that they need us. We don't need them. We don't get paid enough to need ASD. I can leave this job, start up at Walmart and be paid more than I do after eight years with this. I can leave this job, start up at Walmart and be paid more than I do after eight years with the district. And that's not okay. We are the support of the schools. We're your paraprofessionals, your TAs. We are all of your support staff, your new duties, your office administration. We are everybody. The schools cannot run without us. Just ask LA. The entire city shut down for a week because their support staff walked out. Because we don't get paid enough. We don't get treated like people. We're treated like we're expendable and we are not. Right now, we're going through negotiations for our contract and the district needs to remember. That they do need us. We are important. We are not expendable.
Thank you very much. That concludes our persons uh wishing to be heard. In our public comment period. And that brings us to. Uh, we are now on item E, our consent agenda.
Madam President, I move to approve the consent agenda as written. Second.
Moved in second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any opposition to the motion? Any opposition? All right, that the uh that motion passes. The consent agenda as uh is approved as written. We actually had no objection. We have no action items, but we do have quite a a a number of non-action items under G. Um, that will come back before us on the nineteenth. If you have questions on any of those, please bring up uh get get them to the uh superintendent. And we will get you what you need so we can have a discussion. Next time, if necessary. All right, so we are now on item. There are no more persons to be heard, so we are now on uh item I, the superintendent's update.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, just uh one brief item, uh just a reminder that April is around the corner, which means that voters will soon have the opportunity to. Way in on proposition one during the municipal election, which is a school bond focused on safety, security and school revitalization. So our wonderful communications team has launched our new bond website. This is a working digital resource that provides helpful information on the state of our facilities. And the impact that the school bond would have if approved. We've already gotten some great feedback from community members on ways to improve that experience on the website. So be sure to check back regularly at ASDK twelve dot org slash bond. That concludes my report.
Any questions for the superintendent? No questions. Thank you, Dr. Bryant. And now we are at uh school board and administration comments, item J. Okay, uh. Let's start with member Holloman.
I don't have too much. I I do want to say I have been watching a lot of gavel to gavel and. Um, appreciate. How our staff has presented this uh to the legislature, to the committees. Uh, no, Mr. Ratliff is not here because he's a gym affiliate, but. Also watch the superintendent and president on there and I I think. I've done a good job of presenting the issues before us to them in a very reasonable way. Um. Other than that, I do want to raise the issue that in the midst of. Um. I don't know what you call it, confusion over what the budget might be. Um, and the potential cuts we're making this year and possibly next year. We're continuing to talk about career pathways. One of the questions I get from the public is how do we afford this? And I I realize things are still being worked out, but we're at the point now where people are registering their A3s. And uh students are actually thinking about it and making choices. We we do need to have some more substantive. Information, I think, to give the public. Uh, to explain how we know this can happen uh on the timeline. That we have laid out. Uh, I hope that'll be forthcoming in our next meeting. Um, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, member lessons.
Sure, um. After, um, I had a lot of fun last week after the budget was passed. Um, I was, uh, I got an invitation to go to the Polaris General Assembly, no, General. General Assembly, okay, uh, the the student leadership, um. I guess it's just supposed to call it General Assembly. Um, and I think that there were about four dozen students there. Um, it was so engaging, um, our uh president of pack was was there along with some other wonderful student leaders. Uh, practicing, um, Robert's Rules of the Quarter and mostly being totally engaged. Um. In the concept of increased student engagement. Um, there was a robust discussion about. Um, the historic embargo uh between US and Cuba. And I thought this is better than a history lesson because the students brought it to the table themselves. They were discussing issues and not a single student for at least the twenty or twenty-five minutes they were discussing. Cuban history and Cuban American relations was on a phone. They were just, um, they were just so engaged just after school. Um, so that was a really fun opportunity to watch young leadership in action. Um, all board members were invited to a special lunch at Airport Heights. Um, with some sixth graders who were gracious, enthusiastic. Um, and it was a wonderful chance to break bread with community members and just uh hear about um their priorities and and what they were valuing and. Um, talk directly to our students, which is one of the hardest things. That we can do as a school board members, actually spend time with a student during the school day. Um, and I also got a a quick peek at the Model UN over the weekend and Josh was there again as well. Um, but I was particularly impressed with this, the questions that I caught students from ASD around the state. Asking the consul general uh for the UK. Who works out of the San Francisco office and presumably has jurisdiction over Alaska and the rest of the West Coast. Um, asking really great questions at the end of their long two day uh Model UN meeting. So. Wonderful to just sort of get those glimpses of students and ASD and what they're doing. And then I had uh more fun comparing the proposed budget. Prior to budget passage with the the budget that we amended and um. What I think the outcome of our amendment is that every Anchorage legislator. Has no fewer than three schools in their legislative district, some as many as nine. These are schools that will receive um FTE back. Uh, due to our reversal of the PTR plus one. So across, I mean, we know, but just comparing legislator X represents these schools. Um, I was able to sort of divine that every legislator is seeing. Teachers coming who will not be pulled away from their schools as a result of the budget that we passed pending passage of SD one forty. Um, but hopefully we can talk more about that in finance on Thursday at noon. In a little second, we are moving on. Um, so I've had the the pleasure of of doing, uh, attending a couple of different. Meetings. I I peeked in on the, there was. Career Technology Education instructors, they're their leads. I forget what they call them. No, 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 it was it was the CTE. Um, teachers that got together. There's there's leads in every department and I and they they call them something else, but anyways, they had the the pleasure. I I had the pleasure of um. Just hopping into that meeting, which was great. I also participated in the Academy Steering Committee. Um, meeting regarding the academies and I know Abby Holloman brought that up. Um, I wanted to. Share a couple of things, including the these, the academy update in our communications committee meeting, our communications committee meeting. Is coming up on Thursday at one, correct? Or at one o'clock still? Yes, okay. Um, so please attend. We'll discuss further our bond messaging plan that Dr. Bryant mentioned. We will also have an update on our communications plan for the school start times, middle school. Move and and like I said, the academies of Anchorage, so that's a perfect time to tune in if if you want to get more information right off of that. Um, about what's going on with our academies. We'll also have an update for from our diversity, equity and inclusion team. Um, and community engagement team. And if you haven't seen the March edition of the ASD digital published, uh. The ASD digital published last Friday, so please check that out. Aside from the big projects and priorities, there are great shine bright moments in our latest edition of our shine bright podcast and madam president. Um, I heard from a little birdie that you might be on deck for a shine bright podcast. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Um, anyway, so please, if you if you want to know about more about the academies, um, get that update this week, please join us at the communications meeting on Thursday.
Thank you. All right, so Joshua.
Go for the comments.
Great, thank you. Member Donley.
Thank you, Madam President. Anticipation for our discussion in our next meeting on uh college career and life. Our uh, our goal there and our outcome monitoring. I I wanted to. Give a little. Notice to the administration, there's a few things I really would like to talk about at that time. Um. Many years ago, when I was in the Senate, I I just. Learned some disturbing numbers about Alaska and infant mortality. Um. We were doing a really good job. Prenatal and getting babies home safely. From after being born, but in the next year, we were leading the nation in the fatality rate of the babies after they got home. Um, and so at that time I sponsored legislation with PASD, which added to the optional list of things school districts could teach is. Um, uh, infant care. Uh, because so many of our kids are home. At some point in time with an infant. And I wanted us to have that as an option. It wasn't a mandate. But I would like to know what kind of instruction, you know, for next week or two weeks from now, when we talk about. What kind of uh uh instruction our kids are getting in infant care? Because there's a few really basic things could be taught in half an hour that might save some lives, really. It's address that issue of kids coming home safe from the hospital, babies coming home safe from the hospital. Um, also it'd be. And I know member Higgins has talked about this too. Another life readiness to me is in this state, the ability to to. You know, swim to the shore, make it make it, uh, you know, how to survive falling into the water out of a boat or or you know that and. I I know it's very expensive, swimming is expensive, um, but I'd like to just have a discussion of that as a possible addition to one of our. Life, life readiness aspects is that our kids be able to survive. Uh. Basic swimming survival skills. And the the final one I also wanted to discuss is know how much our kids are getting basic cold weather survival. Information right now in school too, because we we do live in the Arctic. And uh, I remember when I went to. Elementary school here, we we talked about that a lot, but I don't know what's happening in our schools right now with. Basic cold weather survival. So those were three things. That I wanted to discuss at our next meeting when we talk about life readiness, possible things that we could explore.
Thank you, sir. Member Jacobs.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, did want to acknowledge first that it is uh after longest months and uh. While I'm solidly sandwiched on the gentleman end of the table, please know that my appreciation for other board members and and key staff. Um, extends to both sides of our dais and then um wanted to reflect on the. Reading proficiency re- report that we reviewed today. Um. We we wouldn't have that growth data in part without the um hard work of some uh amazing educator, support staff, building leadership and. Administration, which has worked with the board and community support to prioritize that proficiency. And so. Uh, thank you to all for making that growth a reality. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Member Higgins.
And I won't use the four hours up, I promise. Um. Uh, I I wanted to say first, I appreciate individuals that bring up safety concerns. Uh, because it not only affects them, it affects everyone else. Uh, so a a special appreciation for that. I hope the administration will look into it, not just for the safety issue. But why did it come up here? Why wasn't it addressed at a lower level or issues and why couldn't it? What did the individuals think, how they could have gone to different locations to raise it if they didn't get a response? So I think that's a, that's. Going to help safety in the future as well. That's really critical. Uh, comment in regards to the negotiation process and labor relations. No one likes to hear. That people don't feel appreciated. Um, every employee in the school district. Uh, plays a critical role in what we're doing. We can't do it without it. Um, and it's and we we recognize that and I um just want to say. I appreciate what uh the speaker had to say and I'm disappointed that she feels uncomfortable. Uh, but I appreciate her and I hope she stays with us because I that's. That's important to us. And then the last I'll just send, uh, that was very interesting information, uh, member lessons. Uh, I like that data. I like the research. I like logical decisions and then I like to look at why. And that type of data where we have the growth that takes place at different points at a faster pace. I've always known between fourth and eighth, we were for a long time substantially ahead. But below that, not reaching the point where we want to be. But uh, that's that's really important information. I knew uh ten years ago, we talked about forty percent of kindergartens are not prepared to enter kindergarten. The figure fifty-five percent is shocking on top of that. Um, but the 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 programs to help the kids before they get to kindergarten is absolutely critical for us to be successful. So I appreciate that research quite a bit. Thank you. And that's it.
All right, thank you. All right, Dr. Bryant, do you have any other comments? Okay, no further comments. I would like to just uh thank um a couple of people, uh. Actually, I thank everybody for all the things that they do. But the op ed that um. Members Lessons, Jacobs and myself, uh. Submitted, uh, published. I just want to thank you guys. Uh, member Lessons is a researcher to her heart. If there is data to be found anywhere on the universe. She will find it. And and that is a gift. To all of us. Um, this is Women's History Month and I had the most delightful time this afternoon right before our meeting with uh Lila. I think her last name is White from um. Polaris K twelve. We had a wonderful, uh, she was actually interviewing me, but I was just enjoying her. Her, I mean, she's just very uh uh. A special young lady. And so uh please, um, it just reminded me of how we. How we engage with uh. Young people who don't even know. Uh, we don't even know they're watching us. I mean, we suspect they are. But they really are. And so how we mentor. How we support, uh, it's just very important, not just during Women's History Month, but all the time. Uh, so I I do challenge all of us to. Um. To spend as much time as we possibly can with our young people. And 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 having conversations with them, whether it's about your life, their life. Somebody else's life. Uh, but that that was just, that just reminded me today of how special uh those moments can be. Um, I do want to thank, I I think someone has already done, uh, thank communications for the, uh, I had an early, a real early, uh. Actually, I had two events this. This week that I really needed to have support from uh communications and they just came through in flying colors. Uh, we had the look, we, the League of Women's Voters presentation, bond presentation. And I want to thank uh uh Larry for his support. What's Larry's last name? Morris. Uh, he was right there by my side. We gave a fabulous report, uh, and and I really do appreciate that because that was in the evening on his time. Um. And I also want to remind board members that if you are having or plan to have uh and uh bond presentations and you need to have information. Uh, really that there, there's lots of information available and you can, you too can have a, uh, you can call a friend if you need to call a friend. To help with your bond presentation. So with that. That's all I have. Um. I'll entertain a motion to this. So with that, that's all I have. Um, I'll intone a motion to dismiss, to adjourn. Oh, boy, two people. Is there a second? Your second? Moved in second. Any objection? Seeing none as people exit the room, we are adjourned.